Welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have our invocation by Pastor Joseph Hector of Joseph and Mary Ministries Inc. in Jonesboro. It will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you would, please stand with me.
Let us pray. Dear God, our Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this moment. We thank you for this hour. We ask for, God, that your will be done in all that takes place on today. God, I pray tonight that you will cover these commissioners, not just in this meeting, but throughout their days. God, that we can move forward with Clayton County. Let your will be done, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our June 21 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
I'd like to remove items 26, 27, 28, and 29.
All right. You're asking to remove Resolution 2022-132, authorizing the county to audit and identify what have, I think it's Malden and Jenkins as auditors. And Order 2022-133 relates to the pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter 2, administration of the governing the commissioners. The same is for 28. I think, hold on. 27, you said 28.
29, 2022-135.
Okay. 27 deals with public comment. 28 is the administrative roles. And Resolution 2022-135 is dealing with film agreement authorization. So it's going to regular agendas, what you're asking for, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there any others?
Yes. I'd like, just really not so much a removal, but item nine, just to make sure that we've got everything included in there with the ratification of the police services.
Do you just want that on the regular agenda?
Just a question on it. It can remain on there, but when we get to there and item 10, really it could stay on there, but I just had a question.
So nine and 10, you have a question prior to approval. Okay. Any others? All right, here and none. I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
I'll second the motion. Does it favor I?
Aye.
Oppose? It's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. State your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. The speaker should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
All right. And as I call the first speaker up, I will remind everybody, or reiterate, please, as you come up here, please be respectful of the commissioners as well as the citizens. Ambassador Andrew Young.
Good evening, and thank you very much for honoring me and letting me speak, but thank you even more for considering my foundation as a future resident of the county. We've been trying now for a good while. Well, let me just say, I formed the foundation because I was turning 90, and I'm trying to think, what do I need to do to get into heaven? And Jesus said, you've got to feed the hungry. Well, for most people, feeding the hungry, you know, I think a lot of my friends do food baskets, and Jose Feed the Hungry has fed hundreds of thousands of people for years. But I've been all over the world and had a lot of blessings. And we're about to have nine billion people on this planet, and we're having trouble feeding seven billion. And as it gets hotter, and as we have more foolishness and wars like they're having in Ukraine, Ukraine produces a lot of food, but now they can't get the food to North Africa where people desperately need it because of the war. We felt that we had to help Africa and India and the rest of the world feed itself. And one of the things that we've seen working in places all over the world is aquaponics, growing food in water, and hydroponics, which is growing food in water. The advantage of that is you can grow a head of lettuce in six weeks. You can't do that in the dirt. You can control the temperature. And we're trying to set up a model that would teach the world how to feed itself. And we'd like to set that up on a piece of property just off 75, on 75. And we chose this area directly because I got a lot of people in Africa and India that have plenty money. If they can fly in and see what we're doing, they can do it in their own countries with their own money. But this is the place where we try to help the rest of the world to see how to get along. And I'm very proud of you all, the way you're doing things here. We'd like to be a part of, you know, have always been a part of this county. I think I've done commencements a couple of times at Clayton State and dealt with the automobile dealerships down here. But I've never lived here, and I've never had property here. This is not my property. It's the Andrew Young Foundation. And they will be investing money to try to create a model. I had a call this morning that I didn't expect and didn't know about, but the largest agricultural company in the world, Cargill in Minnesota, called me and wanted to know what we were doing and said they had heard and they had expressed an interest in it. I don't know what that means, but they've set up, the guy made a point of telling me that he was calling, but the chairman of the corporation knew very much about what we were trying to do. And whether that means we'll get any help, I don't know, but we are doing something that I think the world needs, and I'd like to be a partner with Clayton County and have something that anybody can fly into the Atlanta airport from all over the world. They can come down here and spend a couple of days, see what we're doing, and go back and do it for themselves. So thank you very much for considering us, and God bless us, everything else you're trying to do.
Thank you so much. And I know we spoke about this about a year ago, so I'm glad to see that we finally got to this point. And looking forward, of course, if it passes, to doing some great things with you and your foundation. So thank you for that. And as a point of order, I want everybody to know that I extended Ambassador Young some extra time because he wanted to speak on a zoning matter prior to the zoning matters were to be taken up because he does have to leave. So I appreciate everybody's latitude on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. God bless you.
Thank you. Ambassador.
Can I say, Mr. Young? Mr. Young, as a young man growing up in Los Angeles and just seeing you and other civil rights activists in a book, and then moving to Atlanta, and the first time I saw you was in a grocery store, it was like seeing LeBron James, Kareem Abdul-Jabbar come to life. And I have to say, you, I mean, we could have extended him an hour to talk. For what you've done, not only for, yes, not only for Georgia, but for every black man, white man, in this audience and civil rights. You have afforded yourself to do whatever you like. So I want to say thank you.
Thank you. Well, I've been blessed, and I figure if I want to keep getting blessed, I better pass on the blessings. Thank you.
And Mr. Young, don't leave yet. I just want everybody to know that this was, this used to be my neighbor. He actually lived in the back of me. I lived on Tucker Warner Drive. He lived on Veltre Circle. And so I used to play with his son, Bo, every day, and I liked his son, Bo, a lot. And so I just want to say, you know, this just brings back old memories, you know, Andrew Young and Mayor Young. That's how I know you. You were Mayor Young to us. And you were just everything to our community. You, Mayor Jackson, and I just want to say thank you because you are the reason I am Commissioner here today. And I just want to say thank you, and I love you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ambassador Young, before you leave, I'd like to thank you for your service. Before my clock starts, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County. I've been pulled out of retirement because of the nonsense that I saw on last Tuesday. And it pains me and the citizens of this community that certain members of this board are operating in the spirit of corruption, which plagues the 2,600 employees and whomever they might be applicable to. The termination of CFO Ramona Bivins, not only was collusion and a conspiracy, which equals the word corruption. We, the citizens of this community, after following an ethics complaint with the Board of Ethics, but we are going directly to Tasha Mosley, the DA of this county, to ask for a corruption investigation. We currently have an employee that operates out of the DA's office that is trained on operating on public corruption. Whenever you deal with collusion and conspiracy to attack people with your authority, it is out of order. The citizens of this community is demanding a public corruption investigation regarding the termination of CFO Ramona Bivins. And to my understanding, there could not be a corruption movement. We have a taxpaying attorney. I don't believe any of the commissioners conferred with the attorney before they made this decision to put the county tax dollars in jeopardy. So this was a corrupt collusion and a conspiracy to terminate someone who gave us nine years of service as community servants. Now we are trying to clean it up with a Resolution 2022-132 for justification of the termination. So we, the citizens, are asking Tasha Mosley, our district attorney, to have the special agent in charge of public corruption to investigate this case and beyond. I thank you for your time. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Gwendolyn Gooden, unincorporated Clayton County. Good evening, Chairman Turner, Commissioners. Commissioner Hamburg, you are the only one on this board with over a decade of service and claim you want to be a good steward of the constituents' money. Then why are you not leading instead of following the misties of the other women commissioners on this board? Shame on you. Commissioner Franklin, why didn't you answer the chairman and Commissioner Davis's question on why CFO Ramona Bivins was being terminated when at every meeting we have to endure your needless and unwanted monologues? Well, as you like to say, we should take a deep dive. I assure you, we will be taking a deep dive on your car accident and on your voting patterns. Case in point, on a previous board meeting, you told Commissioner Anderson, and I quote, "Just vote no." Regarding the grant system, they were looking to improve getting other grants for this county. Commissioner Anderson, you're rude, disrespectful, disparaging.
Point of order. Point of order, ma'am. Point of order. You are out of order.
Dismissful statement. Hold on a second. Hold on, hold on a second, Ms. Gooden. Please refrain from direct attacks, please.
You read regarding CFO Ramona Bivins was unnecessary. Unlike you, Mrs. Bivins, ethics and job performance was beyond reproach. Also, Mrs. Bivins is both highly respected and loved by myself and fellow constituents. Lastly, this board unanimously approved CFO Bivins' contract in 2019. What change? We are still waiting for the answers on this matter. Thank you.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. The June 14 work session was very good. We still working on the monitors? Okay. Commissioner Anderson, the way you handled CFO Ramona Bivins' contract was embarrassing and disrespectful. Then you removed people from the June 11 Zoom meeting because they asked why. That is censorship. The CFO's 2019 contract was a unanimous vote by the Board of Commissioners. The CFO's performance is A minus. So ultra-virus was an excuse, not a reason. But Board of Education Chairman Anderson did no better than a D. You supported Beasley getting a $380,000 salary, a $1,500 a month housing stipend, unlimited gas allowance, and administration filled with cronyism. Commissioner Hamburg even told Beasley, "Thank you for doing your job and earning your money." That for a grade D and ranking 174th on the Georgia Schools District list. FYI, Commissioner Anderson, if there's a motion pending, you can't rush to submit another motion. That is a violation of Robert's Rules of Order. Chairman Turner told you, that's not how we do it here. But you couldn't wait to read the pre-written script filled with disinformation. Commissioner Hamburg, your vote with Edmison and Gregory was based on power and greed. It is intimidation, now it is intimidation and collusion. You told me, quote, "I got my head bitten off because I asked why the sheriffs called first responders." Then you told me, "Don't say it too loud." Commissioners say they want to be good stewards of county money and fulfill their fiduciary responsibilities. That's called hypocrisy, because that's exactly what CFO Ramona Bivins was doing. I know you guys have seen John David's emails and the articles in Clayton Crescent. So now the image of three commissioners is pathetic. Thank you.
One more letter. Thank you.
Oh, by the way, I spoke about this before.
Hold on. Go ahead, sir. Hold on. Hold your tongue, please.
I spoke about this before. It is really disturbing to hear somebody say, "You should show respect to the members in this place, to the members on this board, and you two never look at people when they're Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Crystal Perry.
Hello, Crystal Perry, District 3, unincorporated Clayton County. I am here on behalf of my organization, Melanated Pearl Incorporated. We like to say, hey, world, it's your girl, Melanated Pearl, bringing that black light to things that aren't quite right. And what we are shining a light on right now is with inflation. As you all have talked about, a lot of people are experiencing extreme discomfort because they are experiencing homelessness, or they are living in their cars, or they don't have access to water. Imagine 90 degrees at 8 o'clock in the morning, and you don't know when you're going to get your next shower. Or having to drop your child off at the daycare after washing them up at the sink in the QuickTrip. This is what a lot of our citizens are currently going through. It is not a crime to be on hard times. And so rather than continue to watch, we want to be part of a solution, and we're offering what we call summer showers. We've purchased a portable unit, highest-grade camping equipment, FDA-approved, 330-gallon water tank, and hot and cold options. We're going to be having a towel drive. Shout out to people who've already donated. And we have three proof point events that I want to let you all know. We are in Rivertown, Morrow, and Jonesboro. The hope is, again, to be mobile so that if you all or the police call, we can always come to serve. So I would like to leave these.
Leave them with the Mr. Reed there. He'll make sure he gets them.
And again, the only recommendation or thing I would ask you to consider as a nonprofit, when we do this, it is a special event, and so it is a cost of $100 per event. And so for those of us who are serving, just a consideration, if this is something, when this takes off, how can we help make sure that any money's going towards the program, go directly to the service? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Chairman Turner. Can I say, I did see the shower at the park the other day, and I just want to tell you thank you. It's phenomenal, and you're doing a phenomenal job in the community. So thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Same here. Don't go anywhere yet. You are truly a beacon of light for our community, and I thank you because I remember the day you called and you stated, "I want to be a part of the solution." And you've done that. And I don't think this board knows that you not only serve with your organization, but you also serve as the vice chair of the Library Board of Trustees.
Leading is fundamental.
Yes, and we thank you for your service there, and you're also a recipient of one of our grants. Too often, we don't see our grant recipients coming back and telling us what they're doing, so we really appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, Mr. Ambassador, my elected officials, and my fellow citizens of Clayton County. Today, my topic of conversation is litter, garbage, trash, and leadership. However, it is not about the litter and garbage on our highways and byways. It is now about the garbage and trash that has now entered the corridors, hallways, and doors of 112 Smith Street. More specifically, it is about how disrespectful former CFO Ramona Bivins was so unceremoniously relieved of her CFO position as CFO of Clayton County. It would be one thing if she was derelict in any aspect of her duties, but she was not derelict of duties. Matter of fact, her performance for her tenure of 10 years was one of excellent and timely delivery of yearly budgetary requests by any member of the Board of Commissioners and citizens. Let me say this: Hard work, honest, dedicated, and dependable help is hard to find. Speaking to the injustice done toward Ms. Bivins, I hold guilty Commissioner Warren as the architect. I hold guilty Commissioner Anderson as the facilitator. I hold Commissioner Hamburg guilty as the accomplice. What this action toward Ms. Bivins has done, it has fractured morale. How? What happened to Ms. Bivins means it can happen to any other county employee. COO Dietrich Sanford, you may be next. Police Chief Roberts, Fire Chief Markison, Dr. Smith, Performance Management, Clayton County, what's that guy's name? Jeff Matarco? You all could be next. It has also destroyed Spree de Cor. Spree de Cor, pride in the family unit, enclosing. Let me say, injustice anywhere is injustice everywhere. I plagiarized that one. Our lives are balanced between good and evil, and you, Commissioner Hamburg, tip the scale. Are there any?
Thank you, sir. Your time is up. Your time is up.
I know where I left off. Thank you all.
Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. Ms. Anderson, what are the reasons for firing Ms. Ramona Bivins, a Clayton County resident for 21 years? The motions and actions were disrespectful, hostile, and an attempt to publicly humiliate her, which is indicative of you all's mindset and attitudes towards Clayton County residents and staff. Pushing dictatorship equals revolution. Our First Amendment rights were also violated when IT staff received instructions from you to remove me and others from your June 11 virtual town hall public meeting for our chat inquiries regarding Ms. Bivins. U.S. Supreme Justice Hugh Black, the very reason for the First Amendment is to make the people of this country free to think, speak, write, and worship as they wish, not as the government commands. June 7 motions against Ms. Bivins in itself consider ultra-virus. Since, descriptive motion and creator not authorized to serve as the legal advisor for the commissioners. The Open Records Act violation, the sunshine laws, the court that was done. Ms. Anderson's pronunciation and enunciation were incorrect and did not align with the contents. Two definitions: ultra and extremist. Virus: A virus is infectious micro consisting of a segment of nucleic acid, either DNA or RNA, surrounded by a protein coat. A virus cannot replicate alone. Instead, it must infect cells and use components of the host cells to make copies of itself. Often, a virus ends up killing the host in the cell process, causing damage to the host organism. Ultra-virus is a perfect analogy regarding the negative impact of several commissioners' behavior, actions, and decisions. Ms. Hamburg, you continue to wear a mask to prevent COVID-19, which is a mute issue being that you've been infected by two other commissioners who function in an ultra-virus manner. Symptomatic of your June 7 vote firing Ms. Bivins. If it's not ultra-virus, then what? Corrosion. Corrosion, reprisal, or just plain incompetency? Thank you.
Marquella Stigl, I believe I'm saying that right. Ms. Stigl. Marquella. Okay, moving on. Antranel Lamar.
Good afternoon, Antranel Lamar, Clayton County. I just want to bring some sunshine to the meeting because it seemed kind of gloomy now, but I want to give a shout out to another Clayton County employee, Adele Bell down at Lovejoy Regional Park. He is, I think he's not recognized enough because he's went over and above. I've been at Lovejoy ten years, and he actually have paid, coached, and majority of the girls down there to help him get into college, even if they didn't get a softball scholarship, soccer scholarship. He actually spoke up, took money out of his pocket, and actually helped him get into school. So with Clayton County, help me just give a round of applause to Adele Bell. And Sacklin, but lastly, Savoy, Beast Grove Bar and Grill. I want to give a shout out to them. They had an amazing Juneteenth block party. If you was there this past Sunday, it was amazing, where he brung everybody of every ethnicity together up on the one umbrella and had a party, no fights, no anything. So that's one, a shout out to the businesses here in Clayton County. Ambassador Young, thank you for introducing me to the Lewiles when I was a kid, coming from the country to Atlanta. Thanks.
Thank you.
Drew Andrews.
Drew Andrews, Unincorporated, Clayton County, District Four. Thank you for allowing me to present in front of you. I was just going through this agenda, and something just jumped out at me immediately is the public comments. As a soldier, warrior, who have served my country for twenty-one years and seen, you know, friends die, when it comes to our First Amendment right to speak, it's an affront. Any modification, that's a problem, because we work for the people. The people kind of lead us, advise us, so please do not modify public comments. Allow us to continue to speak. I know sometimes it hurts because we're human, and some of the words, they stain. But as elected officials, you have been anointed with armor, so you need to put on your tough skin and continue to allow people to speak and express themselves. I have another minute, and I want to address the homeless population in Clayton County. I see on the agenda where there's some monies being, I guess, proposed for two organizations. I think it was Hope and Nurse Hope and the African Children's Fund. Just wanted some clarification, if you could. I understand that they received some money previously, but I don't know how that money was spent. If there was an impact report that shows how it helped the people in the community and the amount of money that was spent before we give some more money, and if I understand this correctly, they'd be giving some money in hopes to help with the homelessness population? I don't know how those two organizations fit in that piece, because in February, when we had the homeless warming center, I didn't see any of them there. But I did see Ms. Crystal Perry there, who actually do work in the community in the homeless space. I think we should be giving people like her money. Ms. Mapillar, I hope I didn't mess that name up.
Mapillar Da.
Who does work in the space of sickle cell, HIV. Mr. Daryl Stark. These are the people that I call when I'm in a community, actually interfacing with those who are experiencing homelessness. This shelter that you're talking about, Hope Shelter, have you visited that place? And so you have people in the community who actually do the work. Speak to us, and we'll help you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, that concludes the public comment.
Mister Chairman, the board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Mister Young, thank you for standing. Mister Garber.
Mister Garber.
Yes, sir.
I advised you about outbursts. Please, please don't let it happen again. Okay, please don't let it happen again, sir. Well, your best better be enough. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Any questions on any other items? And there was Commissioner Franklin wanted to discuss two items.
Yes.
Nine and ten.
It was just on nine in particular. If someone from 911 could speak to it, because I know some time ago, we added some funds for a police software system, and just wanted to see where were we in getting that complete system installed or working or moving forward?
Jason, you have information on that, or is Chief going to take it?
Anybody.
Both of you come on down.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Chief wanted to volunteer me to do it, so it's okay. So I believe the system referring to is our records management system, and we have went live on the system. We've been live for about a year. And so we've got just a couple more little modules we're putting in, but for the most part, we're ninety percent done.
Okay, and with that, you know, my biggest thing is when we approve this, we think it comes with everything. So how many more modifications do we anticipate, or is it to get the system up and running? Or is it because of expansion and use of the services? I can see the modifications for expansion.
So this request is not related to the RMS system.
Okay.
This request is specifically to get the 911 center to functional to do text to 911.
Oh, good. Awesome. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you, sir.
That's it? Thank you.
No, no. Mister Jefferson? I'm not going to tolerate it. All right, number ten. Was that both the man?
Yes, number ten.
Ms. Rogers.
All right, Ms. Rogers.
Yes.
On the thirty-three vehicles that we're getting, it says for fleet maintenance for emergency purposes, and they're vans. I just didn't know where would we be using those vans, if y'all could just let us know.
Uh, yes, I'm gonna, well. Ready to talk?
Here you may.
You fine.
The departments for the thirty-three, eleven of them are buildings and maintenance. Nine are for the prison. Three are for information technology. Two are for parks and rec. Two are for TND. Then one each for senior services, juvenile court, library, extension, fire, and Board Commissioners Youth Services.
Thank you for putting that on record. I appreciate you. And while Coach is still here, I want to just say thank you for getting that sign on the road for our number one girls' basketball team in Lovejoy. Thank you for making that happen. Thank you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Director Rogers.
All right. Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed, is unanimous.
Mister Chairman, the next item is item number twenty-six, Resolution 2022-132.
Good evening, Mister Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board. Resolution twenty-two, twenty-two, one thirty-two is a resolution authorizing the Clayton County Auditor to identify and recommend accounting firms to the Clayton County Board of Commissioners for the purposes of investigating payments made on behalf of the former Clayton County Chief Financial Officer Ramona Bivins to Vanderbilt University to authorize the Chairman to execute any documents and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution, and for other purposes.
Mister Chairman.
Is there a motion?
I move that, well, I want to, can I make a, I want to discuss this first before we go onto a motion? Okay, I'll go onto the motion, that's fine. I just moved that we accept Resolution twenty-two dash one thirty-two at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Any questions or discussion?
For the discussion, I just wanted to let everyone know that this was brought to my attention, and I just wanted to, I had, we have some questions on whether there was any type of funds that were used inappropriately, and we want to make sure that the taxpayers' money is being used the proper way. So that is why I brought this motion forward.
Any other questions? Comments or statements?
Yes. Last meeting, I asked what justifications were there to not renew Ms. Bivins' contract, and the room went silent. I'm still wondering, what is the justification for that, as well as this? If we don't get clarification on why she was removed, to me, this looks like a witch hunt.
Point of order.
Let me finish. Based off, please.
He has a right to speak.
Based off of simple, "I don't like you."
I would recommend that if there is discussion on a previous personnel matter, that that would occur in executive session as opposed to in public.
Exactly. I one-hundred percent agree with you. And when this was brought to the attention, I received no email, no phone call, nor did we have a discussion about her lack of job performance in executive session.
Mister Reed.
Are there any other questions or statements?
Yes, point of order. This board has a responsibility to not put ourselves in a liable state. This board does not operate under one authority. It operates as a body of an authority, and the majority of this board made a vote. And once that vote was made, then what happens is if we have that discussion and continue it, then it negates the body, the majority of the body. So my point for asking for the point of order is that we do not put ourselves in a situation out here on this dais. So once again, please understand that all personnel matters should be discussed in executive session. I believe there was a code of conduct that was passed once before to bring the entire board up to date on what can be stated on this dais and what cannot, in line with our duties as commissioners to protect this county, both citizens and fiduciary.
Any other questions or statements? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Three, two, it passes. Next.
Next is ordinance twenty-three-two, one thirty-three, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County is amended specifically to amend Part One, related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter Two Administration, Article Two, Board of Commissioners, Section Two dash thirty-five, Agenda, Duties of the Presiding Officer, Minutes, Quorum, Public Comment, Section Two dash thirty-five dash oh five, Public Comment, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations to provide for severability, to provide an effective date of this ordinance, and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? My question to you, Mister Reed, what exactly is this resolution, or ordinance, rather? What does it do?
There are two things. First, it defines, well, it's a number of things. First, it changes the length of time for people to speak from three to two, and has it moved from thirty minutes to twenty. So it'll still be a total of ten people who can speak, but the time period will be two minutes per person. It also sets forth a standard of what can be said at public comment to speak to issues that, let me say it specifically so that it's clear. So that it will speak to items that are related to the items on the agenda. It also repeats the standard for demeanor and refraining from personal attacks upon members of the governing body. It also moves public comment to the slot right prior to executive session.
So it takes it from the beginning of the agenda, places it at the end?
It places it at prior to executive session, if that is going to be the end part.
All right.
Taking it back where it once was.
Yeah, where it used to be.
So again, I was one of those who fought to have it placed at the beginning of the agenda, simply because I value the citizens' input on matters before we vote on them. And to be able to hear, Mister Garber, please, and to be able to hear what the citizens might have to say on a particular item is valuable to me. But that's just me and my one vote. But still, the citizens' input is valuable, and I think it should remain at the beginning of the agenda. Any other questions or comments?
The citi, yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Citizens' vote is, and their voice is very valuable. And each one of these board members that I know of, we have meetings, we meet with folks, we have quarterly meetings, we have bimonthly meetings, we are accessible, and at the end of the day, we are here to serve. But as I have spoken to others throughout this state, we have to understand that with every freedom and every right comes a responsibility as well. And so with that being stated, we did try it the other way, but at the end of the day, it will be back to where it was initially. Simple as that. It is not to curtail anyone's voice in any capacity, and put it on record for me this day. We have allowed even somebody to remain in this room, who I have personally had to file orders. And when we're sitting here, we have to constantly say, "Point of order." This is a very, this world is very interesting right now. And at the end of the day, voices are important, but we have to do things decent and in order.
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Decent and in order. I look at the First Amendment, and it's ironic that Ambassador Young was here tonight, who fought for our civil rights, our voting rights, but yet, we have a black board that wants to take the right of our citizens away, to speak publicly, and say, "Look, I want to put you at the end when nobody's there." That's the equivalent to Jim Crow and the court saying, "Black folks, you can't, you cannot testify in court because of the color of your skin." Now we have.
Mister, Mister Garber, Garber.
Please.
Please.
And what we've done is.
Point of order, that's the third outburst. He needs to be removed.
We have, we have disrespected our citizens. I'm not a state-elected official. I'm a Clayton County representative official, and I'm here to support Clayton County and our citizens. If I don't like what you say, that's so what? You have the right to say it, and let's sit and talk about it. I'm not going to run away from you. This resolution here says, not only do I want to run away from you, but I want to put my thumb on you, just like in Jim Crow days did. And I want to keep you under oppression in everything that we do. Like I say, it's amazing. Andrew Young is here this evening, and we simply vote against what he stood for.
Uh, let me say this. I don't know where all this is coming from. But for years, we had public comment at the end of the meeting. So what is going on? What are you talking about?
I would also like to add, Madam Vice Chair, I find it interesting that you talk about Jim Crow and so forth, but we sat here, and I believe it was January sixth, and we saw things being said, and we saw things happen. We have a responsibility as a board to make sure that we do what we need to do to make sure we're in order. If you want to bring color into it, there is an investigation right now with the president, the past president of the United States, because they felt people could say what they wanted to say, and it turned into an insurrection, or at least an alleged one. So we're not going to move forward out of order. And I agree with you, Madam Vice Chair, this is the way it was, and yes, I was one that voted for it back then. But at the end of the day, when things aren't working, we have to reevaluate and evaluate again. And with that, I call the. And with that, I call the question.
Thank you.
Is there a second to the question?
I second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Three, two, it passes though. So going back to the original motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
It passes. Next.
Next is ordinance twenty-three-two-one-thirty-four, which is an ordinance to amend the Code of Clayton County is amended specifically to amend Part One related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter Two Administration, Article Two Board of Commissioners, Section two dash thirty-five Agenda, duties of the Presiding Officer, Minutes, Quorum, Public Comment, Section two dash thirty-five dash oh-one Agenda, to delete Part One, Chapter Two Administration, Article Four, purchases and property disposition, Division Six Contracting um, requirements, Section two dash thirty-five Approval of Contracts, subsection B Chairman and Chief Operating Officer Authority, and Section two dash one thirty-six Change Orders and Contract Modification, subsection B Chairman and Chief Operating Officer Authority, and replace said subsections with new subsections to amend Part One related laws pertaining to Clayton County, Chapter Two Administration, Article One in General, Section two dash eleven Chief Operating Officer, to repeal any and all conflicting laws, ordinances, resolutions, rules, and regulations to provide for severability, to provide an effective data disordinance, and for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
I second it.
Any questions? So once again, Mr. Reed, this ordinance repeal proposed by Commissioner Franklin, tell me, tell the citizens, what does it mean?
Okay, there are several things that this ordinance does. First, um, it modifies the uh, Agenda section of uh, Section two dash thirty-five oh-one that um, states that department heads must place an item on the Agenda. They must submit that item to the Chief Operating Officer. Um, it used to read, or it read, reads currently, Chief Operating Officer, and then uh, with approval or um, with the approval of the Chairman. And so it, in effect, provides the Chief Operating Officer as the um, initial point to which um, Agenda items are placed on the Agenda. Uh, Section two dash thirty-five, um, sep- section B, it um, gives the Chief Operating Officer the authority to um, sign formal written contracts up to seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine um, and ninety-nine cents, um, and removes the Chairman from that section. And then Section two dash thirty-six, um, also does the same thing as it relates to uh, change orders, um, giving the twenty percent um, amount up to seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents, uh, removing the Chairman from that. And finally, under Section two dash eleven Chief Operating Officer, it um, reverts back to the uh, way that it read uh, prior to June, uh, to um, twenty nineteen, and has the Chief Operating Officer um, uh, reporting directly to the board as opposed to directing to the Chairman, um, and then to the board. So it removes the Chairman from that um, from that process. And that's pretty much a, a summary of the, of these changes.
Okay, so basically, the Chairman no longer will have oversight of day-to-day operations. The Directors report to the full board as opposed to, well, they do that anyway. Two, right now, you would go through the COO and COO to the Chairman, to the full board?
Um, no. Right now, the way that the, the structure is, um, even if this does not pass, the Directors report to the COO, who then reports to the Chairman as the day-to-day operations. This removes uh, the Chairman from that intermediate step. So it, the, the department heads will still report to the COO, and then the COO will report to the board as a whole.
Right. So the Chairman wouldn't have any oversight of the day-to-day operations?
Um, that's not quite right. I, it really is more as it relates to the um-
Reporting.
To reporting structure, correct. The, the things that the Chairman would still be able to do through uh, resolutions, um, the duties that the Chairman holds as a office holder, as a Board of Commissioners, that is not changed.
But any change orders or contracts less than seventy-four nine ninety-nine, that's taken away from the Chairman's seat?
Correct. That would be, um, the purchasing code would be amended to just have the COO be the, the, the executor of those types of contracts.
Got you, got you. Okay. I would really love to know how this benefits the citizens of Clayton County. I know we can get a response or answer on it, so I will move on. Are there any questions? Other questions?
I, I have a comment. We've got inflation at a forty-year high. We've got interest rates that have risen twice in the last three weeks, month. We got our stock market below thirty thousand. Recession inevitably on the horizon. But yet, we don't want to take care of the citizens of Clayton County and look at their work, which is the number one priority. We want to look at how to gain control and power for a few. Chairman, you can, I believe, still have the authority to create a proclamation. That's about it.
Well, the one thing they can't take away, the citizens elected me as Chairman of the county, and I will remain as the Chairman as long as I have. So, are there any other other comments or statements?
Yes, once again, um, it's sad to think that we have to make those type of statements. The way that this board was created years ago is a body, and I said that earlier. We are not like uh, DeKalb County or the City of Atlanta. If it's the will of the people for us to be that way, then we got to go through the State House to get that changed. At the end of the day, it is a body. And what has happened over and over again, when you talk about taking care of the business of the people, is the fact that we got to dig in our coffers because we didn't know about the fact that the GBI wasn't going to no longer provide us with services in enough time. We also find out that there are checks being written, and we don't know who signed those particular checks. So there are many other things and information that did not flow to this board, even when we were Vice Chair in our different positions. And the way our enabling is written, we are a body of five. Everybody has the same equal vote. And in order for us to be able to make good decisions as policymakers, we must receive information. And so this just simply aligns for which this information comes, to the entire board. Simple as that. We're not here for any conjecture. We're not here for any type of fear tactics. We are a body. And as body and the majority is what makes those decisions, no matter how that majority is made up in its vote. And it has to be carried out. It is the will of the people. It is in our enabling, and it is in order. And with that, I call the vote.
I don't believe it was in the will of the people. Votes may call, so is there a second?
I second it.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Uh, original motion. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes. Next.
Next is Resolution twenty-twenty-two-one-thirty-five, which is a resolution to authorize the Chief Operating Officer to execute film-location agreements to provide an effective data dis resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Again, I don't see the relevance of this. Uh, you're talking about authorizing a film crew to be able to operate on county property. Why the Chairperson should be taken out of this loop is beyond me, but nothing else makes sense either. Any other comments, statements? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's three, two, it passes.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are board appointments.
Mr. Chair, I have a point of order, please.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Uh, yes. We've been sitting here talking and going off-base on several things. And this has been bothering me for a couple of days now, but it was brought to my attention by some uh, constituents out of District Four. And I saw it for myself the other day, since we're talking about the citizens and being fair and honest to the citizens and power. You enter into the International Park, and you see the beautiful sign and all of the work that has been done. We have had people here to speak on how wonderful that park is. There's also a smaller sign that says, "Welcome to the Park," with Commissioner Davis's picture on it. That is totally false. That is not the Commissioner's park. As a matter of fact, the origination of that park and the um, study that was done, was done with a previous Commissioner, Commissioner Michael Edmondson, came up with that idea along with staff as to what would be in the place of a beach. So to take credit for something that's not one Commissioner, if we're going to put a welcome sign, the welcome sign should say, "The Board of Commissioners," or we should put the previous Commissioner's name and face on that. Just wanted to bring that to the attention of power.
Do we also have each Commissioner's picture in the rec. centers?
Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Davis, we're going to uh, move on. She's-
Sure.
Well, in other words, that sign needs to be taken down.
It's an operational issue. All right. First board appointment is for the DFAX Board. Ms. Sidney Richardson, term on the Family and Children's Services Board, will expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two. New appointment will begin June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-two, and expire June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven. Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, yes. I would like to reappoint Mr. Sidney Richardson to this board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Board.
Ms. Kim Blackwood has resigned from the Library Board. New appointment begins immediately expires and will expire on May fifth, twenty-twenty-three. Dr. Anderson?
I would like to appoint Mr. Emmett McCord to this board at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next items are zoning hearings, starting with item number thirty-two. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten ti- ten-minute time allotment, excuse me. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Terrence Petrie, Zoning Administrator. So the first agenda on the item is a uh, conditional use permit for a cell tower at seven-thirty-one Veterans Park Ray, um, in Jonesboro. This is located south of the Jonesboro Extra Storage Facility, um, off Terra Boulevard. The concurrently, the request includes tower height setback variances, uh, including reducing the required one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet to forty feet uh, to the restroom proper line, thirty-five feet to the northern proper line, um, one-hundred-and-seventeen feet to the eastern proper line, uh, as per the applicant's amended uh, application, and one-hundred-and-ninety-three feet to the southern proper line as per the, the applicant's um, amended application. So the property is currently in the GB zoning district adjacent, as well as adjacent to the city of, of Jonesboro. The um, proper, the, this cell tower is planned on to be at the northwest corner of the property. And uh, the um, applicant is here for their presentation.
Applicant, please come forward. Before you start presenting, how many minutes, if any, would you like to reserve for a rebuttal? Goddamn the public here.
Uh, two minutes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, uh, members of the board. My name is Harold Buckley, twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road in Atlanta. I'm with Wilson, Brock, and Erby, and I'm, I'm here before you this evening on behalf of TowerCom. Uh, my remarks are going to be very brief. This is a very, fairly straightforward matter, uh, as far as zonings go. Uh, TowerCom is proposing a one-hundred-and-ninety-five-foot tower in this location. Uh, the total tower height is uh, one-hundred-and-ninety-nine feet, because at the top of the tower, there will be antennas that extend four feet higher than the top of the tower. So the tower is actually itself just one-hundred-and-ninety-five feet. I'm going to explain uh, a note that you have in your agenda, referring to the ZAG and its decision and why that decision was made. And then I'm going to give you a few uh, reasons what, uh, why this board would be well-served and it would well-serve the citizens of Clayton County to approve this application. On your agenda, it says that the ZAG recommended denial of this application due to the setback requirements. Uh, the reason the ZAG did that is because uh, the planning staff thought that we did not submit applications for our concurrent uh, tower height setback variances. Uh, and based on that misunderstanding, they recommended denial of the application. But during the hearing, uh, we were able to provide documentation showing that we did actually uh, submit uh, uh, for those setback variances, and based on that uh, new information, the staff reversed its uh, recommendation and recommended approval of our application. But by that time, the ZAG members were thoroughly turned around with what was going on, and so they recommended denial based on that confusion. So that's why that note is in your agenda. Moving to the reasons why this body should approve the application. Number one, approving the application will improve local voice and data service. Uh, one thing this tower will do is improve cell coverage, particularly indoor. Cell coverage uh, within a two-mile area. Uh, and basically, that area uh, centers on Terra Boulevard, and it stretches between North Avenue and Flint River Road. Uh, it also improves network capacity for data services such as streaming and downloading. Um, and what that does is reduce data service congestion on other nearby towers. It basically improves uh, the data services that uh, the, the residents uh, are able to take advantage of. The next reason is that approving this tower will, will eliminate pressure for potential towers on nearby residential subdivisions. Uh, this tower uh, is intended to um, to serve T-Mobile. And it will improve T-Mobile's uh, uh, system service as I described. Uh, but it will also provide colocation opportunities. Uh, the companies that are, that we would consider to be top prospects, although we have not spoken to them yet, uh, would be AT&amp;T, Verizon, and Dish. Uh, the expectation that TowerCom has, because this is filling a, a, a hole in its uh, service, is that all uh, service carriers will want to be on this tower uh, within the next three years. And what that does is it removes the impetus for another tower uh, that would be in a less ideal uh, location, which brings me to my next point, which is this tower is at least five-hundred feet away from the nearest residential area. Uh, and as you know, because you see a lot of tower applications, uh, that is not, you know, necessarily what you typically see. If tower companies want to improve residential service, they want to be near residential areas. But because we have this general business zoning in close proximity to uh, residential areas, but it's not right up on top of them, we're able to improve residential service without encroaching into residential areas. Uh, and finally, and I think this is because of the last point I just made, so far in this process, we have not had any community opposition, which is again, not typical for a cell tower application. So uh, this is an opportunity to improve service, reduce uh, the potential for incursions in the residential area, and also do it without really upsetting the community. And finally, TowerCom has an established track record in Clayton County. I have been representing them on these applications, uh, my, uh, starting about ten years ago. And I've personally gotten four TowerCom, uh, towers approved in Clayton County, and I don't believe any of them has had a problem uh, with regard to uh, any concerns about uh, the quality of the operation. any concerns about the quality of the operation. So for all of those reasons, I very respectfully ask you to approve our application.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we'll have a public hearing. Is there anyone here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anyone in opposition? Would you still like to use your two minutes? No?
No, I am not in love with the sound of my own voice. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I heard Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I do have a couple of questions. One, what is the wind speed that your structure is?
We have submitted an engineering statement that says that this tower is designed to withstand wind speeds of up to 108 miles an hour. So if anything were to happen to cause a structural failure, Clayton County's got a lot of bigger problems, because that means a tornado has touched down.
And also too, is this a fixed tower, if it were to fall, or collapsible?
It's a collapsible tower. The tower is made up of four sections. And there is a steel cable that is anchored in the foundation. It runs up the inside of the tower to the top. And in the event of a tower failure, it is designed so that the top half will deform. And that steel cable is exclusively intended to hold those pieces together. So even if there is a failure, no part of this tower will leave the fall area, which is a 35-foot radius.
The radius is-
35 feet.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Commissioner Hambrich.
Yes, you said it's gonna be how far from residential?
The nearest residential property, I measured it on your GIS system, is 500 feet away.
Okay, so does this mean you will or will not have that appearance of, like sometime trees or whatever, or will it have its original state? How will it look?
We are proposing it as a monopole. The tree, the concealed structure, like a tree, that you suggest, it works better when it's in a tree-covered area, because otherwise, it's not a very natural-looking tree. And so it works best when it has other trees to blend in with.
Sort of just have the appearance of just a regular tower.
Yes, Madam Commissioner.
And you said, obviously, there has been several meetings, and nobody from the community has opposed.
Not one time.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just want to say the tree, even among the trees, still don't look like a tree. So sorry.
Yeah, it tries, bless its heart.
Bless its heart.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I move we approve this. I stated.
I'll second the motion. Are there any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ellis Steele, planning consultant, Clayton County Planning and Zoning. The next case is BOC number 2202-0180 CUP. This is a request by Devon Evans for a conditional use permit at 10237 Terra Boulevard, Jonesboro. It is to operate a special events facility in about 1,260 square feet and on 1.17 acres. It is located at Iris Walk Station Shopping Plaza. It's at the intersection of Terra Boulevard and Iris Walk. And the subject property is in the Highway 138 overlay district. As you can see, this is part of a overall PUD with commercial on the front and residential on the rear. This is a site plan of the property, and the shaded area is the suite that's requesting the PUD. Staff is recommending approval. The ZAG did recommend denial.
Are the applicants present? Please come forward. Before you make your presentation, would you like to reserve any minutes for rebuttal? Should somebody oppose you?
One minute is fine.
Okay. Put nine on the clock.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, Commissioners. Devon Everson, representing Blank Canvas Events LLC, 10273 Tara Boulevard. I just wanted to hit some key points on the concerns from the ZAG. I'm not going to bore everybody and explain what an event space is. So the event space was, before I took over the lease, it was a dance studio. So we're not doing too much to change the use. Lot of technicality zoning said we needed a conditional use permit due to the fact that it's going to be mixed-use now. So some of the issues with the ZAG was about parking. So the ordinance, Clayton County, you know, one space per three persons. We have about 39 parking spaces. Our occupancy is between 50 and 60, but I capped it at 50 to kind of appease the concerns of the ZAG group. So in technicality, we need 16 spaces. We have a 40-space lot, first-come, first-served policy with the tenants. So we have, and we also have over 50 spaces in the lot adjacent in case of overflow. Another concern was mass events, community rights, and quiet enjoyment, which is the residential community behind us. So events of more than 50 occupancy would not be allowed or permitted. Parties will sign a contract and agreeance to terms and are subject to immediate removal from facility, loss of deposit, and local authorities may be notified. We have security cameras installed with a lot of feeds, inside and outside. Another concern from the ZAG, I just wanted to kind of assure that we are not a club. We're not going to turn into a lounge, a teen party host, or we will not convert as such. The facility is more so an intimate space for tasteful events, i.e. baby showers, paint parties, candle-making parties, dance lessons, et cetera, et cetera. And we will uphold that standard to have those type of events. Blank Canvas LLC also has, we have a clause in our lease with the building owner that subjects us to automatic termination with any noise complaint. I just want to go over my good faith. We understand the concerns of the ZAG members. We only can operate on good faith towards community and community officials along with planning and safeguarding the business from unforeseen hypothetical extreme scenarios. So I didn't get a reason for the denial. So I want to explain hypothetical extreme scenarios. During the ZAG meeting, I was asked, I have 75 people, 75 cars, which is extreme hypothetical as I have a small space. So nobody in their right mind, well, I don't think nobody would want to book a party of 60 to 150 people in this small space. It's just not that type of business, and it's not that venue for that type of event. So I understand that scenario of overflow parking in the community behind the building, but that's kind of was a stretch in my eyes. But I respect, you know, the concern from the ZAG board. Contract stipulations, security cameras, strict occupancy caps are just a few means in which we plan to avoid conflict and safeguard the community and the business from concerns of the ZAG committee. And that's all I have.
Okay. So this is the public hearing. Is anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? You have anything else to add before I go to Commissioner Franklin?
Thank you for your time, and happy Juneteenth.
Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, first, I want to make sure that we take a point that each one of these recommendations has an opportunity for people to speak for and against, which directly impacts the community. But I had an opportunity to spend some time with you today, and I listened to your system as loud as it could be, and I didn't hear it, number one. Number two, we did have a conversation about the stipulations and the requirements. I'm going to make a recommendation that we do approve this use, but I would like for us to cap it at the 60. I think that 50 is good, but at the end of the day, if you've got somebody in the kitchen or facilitating, or as you said, you're going to work with the other businesses, then they may come in and out. But I believe that you are definitely one who is an asset in our community, and I look forward to you growing more businesses in Clayton County.
Thank you.
The motions to approve, is there a second?
I second it.
We had a stipulation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Point of clarity, we recommend approval with conditions, and the two conditions on the screen. So we-
Read them in the record form.
So the conditions would be attendance of all events must be not exceed 60, and special arrangements for parking must be arranged with adjacent business owner prior to each event.
You agreeance with that, with the special conditions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner, if you would, restate your motion.
I make the motion with the two conditions, and that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Welcome to Clayton County, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Next item is BOC number 2202-189. It's for future land use map update. This applicant is AE Partners. On behalf of First Christian Church of Jonesboro, this is to change from general commercial to high-density residential to construct multifamily senior housing project of 48 units on 11.78 acres of land. The subject property is at 625 Highway 138, formerly known as 665 North Avenue, Jonesboro. The property is in the Highway 138 overlay district, adjacent to Kroger Shopping Center near Jonesboro. I'm sorry. This is the zoning map showing the property's own general business. This is the proposed high-density residential. And this is the site plan. Staff is recommending approval. The ZAG did recommend approval of this request.
Are the applicants present? Applicants present? Okay. Well, if you would like to represent the church and come and speak on their behalf, please come forward.
My name is Paul Ballard, and I am the chairman of the elders at First Christian Church of Jonesboro. Our church has ministered to Clayton County for over 50 years, and we believe we've been a good citizen in every opportunity and worked with this board and other boards over that 50 years. We were blessed by God with the gift of this property back in 2017, and we began searching for the appropriate uses of it. And it seemed like every time we gained a little bit of money, the tax assessor raised our taxes. And we can't afford to continue to pay the taxes on it, so we decided to try and sell it. And again, the incumbent upon this church to steward the blessings that God has given us with, given us, and we believe the best use of this piece of property is the applicant's use for senior housing. And we would ask you to approve that and get us all moving in the right direction and put this on the tax roll so the county can enjoy it too.
Well, thank you. All right, is there anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Please come forward.
My name is Dr. Jay Shaath. I'm a geriatrician. And good to see a senior community that is coming in Clayton County. Big need. As everyone knows, we have increase in our demographic cycles. We are all getting there, or we will all get there. We really need the community that is geared towards seniors. And so I applaud the effort, and I support this.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Please come forward.
Hello, Atanya Jean Funny. I would like to speak in favor of this. As someone who lives in a three-generation household currently, I do know that senior housing is definitely needed in our county. I would like to see if it's possible, though, if we can allocate a certain amount of housing for current Clayton County residents, because what happens a lot of times is that the nicer things, people come in from other places, and then when our residents need something, there's nothing there for them. So if we can make sure that our current senior citizens know about this development, know how to apply, because as someone that is looking for senior residents for a loved one, it is very hard to even find the information. And then when you get there, the allocation is not there anymore. And also, the scale that is being used for our seniors, sometimes, you know, some of our seniors did pretty well when they were working, but they don't want a two-bedroom. They want a one-bedroom. And then they find out that they earned too much money for a one-bedroom. So if we could look at some of those things to make sure that our current Clayton County residents are able to enjoy this, that would be great. Thank you.
The one thing we can do is put the word out, so definitely. If it passes, of course. Anybody else like to speak in favor to? Anyone would like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? All right, Commissioner Davis.
First of all, the First Christian Church, I want to say thank you for all that you do in the community, your parking lot and just opening up your church, your church doors, and also when you were giving way free water. I just want to say thank you for that, for folks walking on the trails. I've spoken with them intensely about this development. I think it's going to be a great asset to that area and uplifting that area. So for that reason, I'd like to move that we approve this motion.
Second.
All right, probably move to second. Are there any questions? I don't have a question, but just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Davis said, the church has done a lot in the community. And this is another way for you to give, we have an active senior community. And they are looking for somewhere nice and great to live and conveniently located. And I think that's a great location for it. So thank you in the church for all that y'all are doing. Any other questions or comments? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Congratulations.
Next item is a request that associated with the last request, which was for a future land use map update. This is the request for the rezoning of the same property. The current property is, the current zone is general business. They're requesting RM, which is a residential multifamily, to construct a senior project. The, like we just said, the maximum is 48 units. What's proposed 48 units on 11.78 acres. And staff is recommending approval with conditions. And I'll get to those conditions. So the original staff report had four conditions. However, a couple of them were repetitive, so we've taken them out. We're going along with the ZAG. We're asking for condition one and condition three. The first condition is the proposed development should have no more than 48 units. The plan, the development plan should comply in general conformity with the plan that was submitted January 26, 2022. And the minimum of three parking space shall be designated for electric vehicles, charging stations. That is our recommendation, as well as ZAG's recommendation.
Okay. Applicant here again? Applicant here again? Lieutenant, could you ask that gentleman in the green to come back? Sir, there's a second part to your request, so...
Again, like the previous gentleman said, I don't like to hear the sound of my own voice, so I'll just say all the same applies. It's the other piece to the puzzle so that we can proceed with this project.
Okay, so again, this is public hearing. Anybody want to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Okay, did you read, you read the conditions, did you? Okay, you in agreement with the conditions?
We're good with the conditions, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I move that we approve BLC twenty-two-zero-two-dash-zero-one-eight-eight with the two set conditions.
You said the two?
Two, there's only two.
Second.
All right, probably move to second. Any questions? Hearing them, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you.
Next request is BLC number two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-nine-three, so rezoning request. This is an application from, the applicant is integrated science and engineering to resume two-five-five-nine Mount Zion Road from GB to agriculture for the construction of aquaponics farm facility. The said property is on five acre, located near Richardson Parkway and Mount Zion Road, the fork at Mount Zion Road. The property is currently on GB, and the future land use showed as mixed use. This is a site plan of the property, has a home structure on it currently, which is proposed to remain, and this is a proposed site plan of the proposed request, and this is the request that the ambassador was speaking on, and staff is recommending approval, as well as ZAG recommends approval.
All right, are the applicants here? Anybody from the foundation, please? Yes, sir. Would you like to reserve any minutes in rebuttal, should there be opposition?
Whatever the balance time is, that's fine.
Two minutes?
Two minutes is fine.
All right. Set a timer for eight.
Thank you Chairman Turner and the Board of Commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to present our case here, and thank you for allowing Ambassador Yag to speak for a few minutes at the start of the public hearing.
I'm sorry to just state your name for us.
My name is Godav Kumar, and I'm representing Enomiya Partners here. We are trying to build an aquaponics farm on the proposed site. The aquaponics is a unique innovative technology to grow food along with fish, and it's a symbiotic system, and there is no discharge from the system, so it's one of the most, let's say, effective method to grow fresh and organic food without using any pesticide or fertilizer. We intend to build a one-acre aquaponics farm, and with aquaponics system, we can grow ten times more food using five percent water, using ten percent of energy as compared to traditional agriculture, and we want to bring this innovative technology to Clayton County. It'll be the largest in the southeast aquaponics farm. We want to build, with the processing facility, there'll be a training facility, and we would like to train the local youth who are interested in this to develop a skill set who could be employed in the farm. The farm will employ about twenty full-time jobs. Our minimum wage we are working on is at least twenty dollars an hour with no skilled jobs, and there will be other jobs for the positions of managerial positions. We also intend to host a farmer's market every weekend, and it'll be our effort to give at least ten percent of the produce back to the community in terms of donation. We, our team has done this all around the world. We have sixteen farms operating in different parts of the world, but there is none in United States. And so Ambassador said that, you know, if we are trying to do this in Atlanta, why not do it in Clayton County? Because we want to take care, bring more jobs, bring more economic empowerment in the south side of the airport. That's what, our proposal is to get it from the general business to agriculture.
Thank you, sir. All right, anybody would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor of? Anybody opposed to? Any opposition? All right, Commissioner Anderson. Are there any stipulations to this? Special conditions?
No, sir.
All right, Commissioner Anderson.
Good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you. This is very innovative, and thank you for providing jobs for our community, as well as some of the things that you're gonna be doing as far as giving back. I want to make a motion to accept the applicant's request to resume from general business to agriculture at this time. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? Again, we spoke about this for a while, so I appreciate everything that y'all brought to the table in terms of what you want to do with Clayton County, so it actually looks like it's gonna come to fruition.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. We are really excited about it, and I would like to thank Ms. Erica Rocker, who has been wonderful to work with in the site selection, as well as the process through the...
Great, great.
Thank you.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
The next request is BLC number two-two-zero-three-dash-zero-one-nine-four. It is the second part to the aquaponics request. This is the actual rezoning portion of the request at two-five-five-nine Mount Zion Road, and staffers recommend our approval. They are requesting to resume from general business to agricultural. Staff recommend approval as well as ZAG.
Applicant? I'll give you another two minutes on rebuttal if you have. Is there anything extra you'd like to add?
We just want to say that we are very excited to bring these jobs and economic opportunity in Clayton County. It is going to be about, I would say, at least eight to ten million dollars of investment, and we are really excited about it.
Anybody like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Any opposition? Commissioner Anderson.
Again, thank you for everything that you all are doing, and I want to, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request to amend the future land use map from mixed-use designation to agricultural designation. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next request is BLC number two-two-zero-four-dash-zero-one-nine-five, modification. This request is to modify four conditions on a previously approved condition use permit. The applicant is Mr. Singh. He requesting modification of four conditions within the mixed-use zone, mixed-use district. The applicant intends to develop a memory care, senior independence, assisted living, as well as multifamily facility. The property consists of two point five nine acres, and is located near Richards, I don't think that's correct, excuse me one second. Located at seventeen ninety-five Highway one-thirty-eight, and it is near the intersection of Wright Circle and Highway one-thirty-eight. The staffers recommending... Just give me one second here. The ZAG recommended denial, staff recommended approval of two of the four conditions, and one of those... Just give me one second. So staff will recommend three of the conditions. One to reduce the square footage of the units from two hundred fifty, five hundred and seventy-six square feet to two hundred and sixty-four square feet, and they're saying this is consistent with the memory care standards industry-wide. The second one would be to increase the number of units for the memory care facility from twenty to twenty-four units, and the third one would be to modify the proposed use for the property for memory care, senior independence, and assisted living to include multifamily. Staff recommended denial of one of the requests, number three, which would be to install five-foot sidewalks along Stockbridge roads instead of the eight-foot sidewalk as required by the overlay district. So, and instead, ZAG recommended denial of the request altogether.
All right, is the applicant present? Would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal?
Sure.
How many?
Yes, three minutes.
Three?
Three minutes.
Okay. Set a timer for seven, please. Please state your name and proceed.
Good evening. My name is Paul Singh, and I'm from Alpharetta, Georgia. My family is here in Clayton County, my father, mother. You know, I grew up here in Clayton County. This is a pleasure, respect to Commissioners for my being here today. This is a project which my father started a few years ago. My father passed away in two thousand seventeen, so I've carrying on that, you know, this project so I can hopefully bring it to fruition for Clayton County for a need that we have for our senior and memory care requirements. Again, a little bit by myself, I grew up here, I'm a, you know, part of the public school system here in Clayton County, went to Swinell Elementary, I went to Riverdale High School, Riverdale Junior High, and at that time was Riverdale Junior High, and I had the privilege to go to Georgia Tech and become a civil engineer with the construction management focus, and also got the opportunity to get a master's in business, and have been able to have opportunities with DeKalb County, Gwinnett County, and have also contracted with Clayton County as well. But this is my first development opportunity here, try to bring back something to the county where I grew up in. So I appreciate the opportunity to just be here and present in front of you. Just a little bit about our project here, this is, our group is a spy v. crossing development. Again, this is a zoning modification request for some conditions that were initially inconsistent that would help get this initial phase of our project, our development, which is the memory care center to fruition, and that was the conditions that were mentioned by Clayton County, and I'll go over those a little bit later, but just to kind of give you a briefing on that. Little bit about the location here, it's right here at Wright Circle and one-thirty-eight, and that's the physical address there, two point five six nine acres. Currently, it's undevelopment property, commercial, and it's, hopefully this is, the project will bring a well-required need here for Clayton County to serve the senior community. This is the site survey here of the property that we're utilizing for this memory care facility, and this is the location we have right now, conceptually designed. We have our design and development team together to help put this together. This is gonna be the memory care facility, we Beehive Homes, and just a layout of how this will look on the site. So building elevation of Beehive Homes, again, this is the franchise that we're working with that has success already in Gainesville, Woodstock, Georgia, on the north side of town, but again, this being, you know, where I grew up and where I'd like to see it happen, the south side has a deficiency as far as memory care and senior centers, so this is something that hopefully we'll be able to set a standard for the south side community as well. This is a rendering, a concept rendering of the Beehive Home that will be potentially built on the site. Again, this is a little bit of a layout here, the units, what we're looking for, which is a standard-sized unit for the memory care to give the intimate setting, is two hundred and sixty-four square feet, part of the modifications that we're requesting here, along with the increase from the building capacity from twenty units to twenty-four units to be able to support a few more, obviously, require residents that might require senior, I'm sorry, memory care. There's a little bit of project highlights here, I'm gonna let my colleague here, Dr. Shath, who's a physician and has served the senior community for many years, and let him speak to some of the benefits that this project will bring for Clayton County.
Thank you for the opportunity to present this project. Like Paul mentioned, I'm a physician-practiced geriatrician.
Give us your name, sir.
Jay Shath, and majority of my work as a geriatrician is taking care of folks with Alzheimer's and dementia. So this is a Beehive Home. When I started practice twenty-two years ago in Louisville, Kentucky area, there were four Beehive Homes, and owner of those Beehive Homes, I took care of his mother who had Alzheimer's. That is how I came across Beehive Homes. Today, there are more than two hundred and fifty Beehive Homes across the country, and its concept is something very conducive to taking care of people with Alzheimer's. It is a home, relatively a smaller-sized facility, and practically it is a twenty-four-bedroom home. You have common kitchen and dining and activity area, as well as folks with Alzheimer's, they are special. When God gives you Alzheimer's disease, we don't find many of the other diseases that we find, folks who are in their eighties, nineties, and hundreds. It is very interesting. They may have just a little hypertension or arthritis, something, but other than that it's Alzheimer's. With that forgetfulness, cognitive impairment comes the need for safety, the need for what we call instrumental activities of daily living, cooking for them, taking care of some of the chores, as well as providing a safe environment in a home-like setting. That is exactly what Beehive is, and proven concept. We have some homes built in Georgia on north side, in Woodstock, in Gainesville, and that is the classic size of the facility. What we do bring along with it is senior care is something I'm passionate about, that's close to my heart, and we want to bring in somewhat of a aging-in-place as much as that we can provide. So we will have independent living in the form of a multifamily, assisted living as there is more need for caring, as well as the memory care, which is something that requires intense staffing, more jobs for the community, as well as needs the safe area, and over a period of time with technological advancement, as well as medical advancements, we have some new medications after twenty years for Alzheimer's that is, seems to be effective. The duration of time in which our elderly folks with Alzheimer's, they are now staying in the assisted living or memory care facility level and not in the nursing home level of care is becoming longer, right?
I'm sorry to cut you off, sir, but your time is up.
Okay.
And you also exhausted time for anybody...
I'd gladly answer any questions around that part.
Okay, just stand by on that.
Yes, sir.
Exhausted any time also for anybody to speak in favor of? Is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Okay, so you do have three minutes if you left, if you'd like to say something in addition to it.
I'll gladly answer any questions. I think that is the best thing I can do. One thing is that we do have a deficiency. We do have a great need, and I was talking to Ms. Erica there, thank you for all the support. She took us, took us around the, around the community and showed all the great work that is going on. So there is a great need for it, and I would love to be part of it. Like Paul mentioned, Paul's dad was somebody, a good friend. I'm kind of in between his dad's age and him, and we would like to see that, that is how we started, and would like to see it coming to fruition. So... Um, so, uh, you know, we are, we are excited to be part of the community and I'll gladly answer any questions that, that the board of commissioners may have.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Davis.
Yes, I, I love Mr. Singh, it's hard calling me Mr. Singh, but, uh, Mr. Singh, Mr. Scheth, I appreciate you bringing this type of projects to Clayton County. The only issue, very small issue, I have is going back to the five-foot wide sidewalks instead of the eight. I really would like, especially with the pedestrian, uh, safety there, to keep it at eight foot. I'm, I'm hoping that you can, um, agree to that.
Yeah, we, we agree.
Thank you, thank you, but.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, I, well, with that condition or modification of that condition, I'd like to move that we approve this.
So read us off the conditions with a new amendment.
Okay, so the, uh, staff is recommending, um, all of the above conditions, um, including the installation of fi-, of, of eight-foot sidewalk instead of five-foot sidewalks. Uh, in addition to that, the, um, reduction of the square footage from fifty, five hundred and seventy-six square feet to two hundred and sixty-four square feet, the increase of the units from twenty units to twenty-four units, and the modification of the proposed use to allow multifamily in addition to the memory care, uh, senior independence and assisted living facility.
And you're in agreeance with those conditions, sir?
Yes, sir.
Restate your.
Restate it?
Yeah.
Sure, I move that we, which number is this one? Approve twenty-two zero four dash zero one nine five with the, with the conditions as stated and modified.
Second.
Any other questions?
I, I have a question. Um, as far as the safety of the Alzheimer's patients, um, what would you all be providing? Would you all be doing fencing or something like that, so if they wander off, or some type of gate, uh, where they cannot wander off the, um, the community? What would you be doing for their safety?
So both. We, this facility is a large facility, so it has access control, so folks cannot, uh, open it because, as you know, elopement is one of the, one of the issues. And, um, um, so, as well as there will be fencing. So there will be multiple layers of it, as well as auto attendant, or not auto attendant in the facility, uh, will be there. And that was one of the first learnings that I've had. I'll take a minute for it. While in fellowship training in geriatrics, we had a patient admitted, um, elderly woman, admitted for Chesping, uh, had Alzheimer's. We could not find her. She was scheduled that afternoon for stress test. We found her forty blocks away from the hospital. And I said, it was cold weather, I said, stress test is done. That is the general direction, she lived in, she went on there, was knocking on folks' door, somebody called her in with the colder weather, called police and said she's there. So, that is the very, very important, safety is probably the most important thing we provide to folks, and it is multiple ways it is taken care of.
Thanks for reentering that.
And again, thank you very much, this is my pleasure to be here in front of you and an opportunity for me to get back to where I grew up, thank you very much, commissioners.
Any other questions?
Yes, just one, um, instead of a question, I want to say Paul, it's been a blessing, um, seeing you take on this project. I remember your dad and the last time I saw him in my office, uh, here, but, um, your family have been great, great citizens in this community, including your mother. And so I'm looking forward to, uh, being able to see you all open this facility, and I'm looking forward to some of our residents being able to have their families here instead of having to travel so far. So thank you.
Thank you.
We're proud of you.
And one of the hopes we have, um, is us to be able to bring in affordable housing for seniors. And it is pretty competitive, but we would like to do so, we are going to try, work hard, and we would seek your support, uh, for the same project. That would be, that would be great if we can do that, so, thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
All right, those in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Paul, I think your dad would be proud of you.
Uh, next request is, uh, BLC number two-two zero four dash one zero one, I'm sorry, zero one nine six. It's a rezoning request by Josh Mahoney, who requested to rezone subject property from light industrial to heavy industrial, I'm sorry, um, uh, to zone the property to light industrial from general business to construct a truck parking lot. The subject property is seven point five six acres and located at, uh, Quick Trip Way on a bust, the I six seventy-five on ramp on the west, on the eastern side. Uh, the property is located in the highway forty-two overlay district. Staff has recommended approval of the request, uh, the Zag had recommended denial.
Is the applicant present? And how many minutes would you like to reserve for rebuttal?
Good evening, Chairman, Board, guys, see everyone, five minutes will be fine.
Five minutes?
Yeah.
Put five on the clock, please. Please proceed.
Wait, Mr. Chair, pouring a order, what is your name, sir?
Oh, no problem. Good to see everyone again, Tyler McSwain, thirty-five, sixty-two, Haber Sham, at Northlake, Tucker, Georgia, um, part of Battle Law, representing the applicant.
He just came in here and stole down, float.
That's my point, Mr. Chair, you're just getting it.
Save the best for last. So, um, I'll go ahead and get started, um, thank you all for having me this evening, thank you for having the applicant, uh, Andrew is here for Perseca. So, this request, and I'll try to approach it, um, wanted to clear up a few themes that was read over to you all and kind of take a step back and explain what happened during Zag as well, so you're familiar with the request. Uh, starting with this, the information on this, this is not a truck stop, it's more of a location where the storage of the trucks will be placed, this is a private entity, it's a private business, that will be gated and it will be secure, um, so just wanted to clear that up. Again, we're requesting to rezone seven acres, so seven and a half acres that's currently zoned GB, general birt, business, which is commercial, to light industrial, uh, for parking services, uh, within the existial, existing industrial and commercial codex of Quick Trip Way. Want to go into a few takeaways here, this property, uh, is a great location for this, this is separated from any residential neighborhoods, is a directly within, uh, approximately, uh, six hundred, three hundred feet from Interstate, uh, six seventy-five. So ideally, you will want to have truck parking away from the residential areas and somewhere where infrastructure allows it to grow and, and do well. Um, just a few notes about the property, again, this is located within the highway forty-two overlay. So, our design and our layout is going to be one hundred percent compliant with that, so we want to make sure that we are, uh, uplifting our development and making sure that we're in compliance with our design regulations within Clayton County. Okay, so if you can see on the screen, uh, this property is adjacent, um, to two important properties that I want to mention. Again, this is Quick Trip Way, it's called Quick Trip Way for a reason, adjacent south with the property, that's where they, uh, fabricate the, uh, tabletops for the Quick Trip, um, businesses. Uh, and of course, adjacent to the north, um, there is a Quick Trip gas station and diesel service station is, as well there, where trucks get to fill up, um, before they get back on the road. Going into the zoning again, currently, we see that the red here, everything adjacent to this property is either commercial or industrial. Heavy industrial, we are requesting light industrial. I want to take a more elementary approach to the land use on this one, so, again, we're asking for something that the comprehensive plan for Clayton County already allows. It's zoned for, designated MXI, it's commercial and industrial, there are certain land uses that can go there, one of those land uses is LI, so we don't need to request a future land use map amendment. Clayton County's comprehensive plan has designated a use like this to be in this location. Again, just showing the permitted uses that are allowed in, in LI, this is something that doesn't require a conditional use, it's a permitted use by right if zoned to LI. For those who are looking, this is the site plan proposed, um, for this development, uh, the applicant is aware of the highway forty-two's, uh, requirement for parking islands, um, it will be one hundred percent compliant with the highway forty-two overlay, and making sure that we can enhance as much green space as possible on the site, which allows, um, allows a more unique approach to, uh, something which is not present, present in the, uh, Quick Trip, uh, adjacent to this property. Again, visibility is little to none off of, uh, Interstate, uh, six seventy-five, uh, DOT requires, and I'm gonna go to the, uh, aerial view so you can see, there's a slither of land that goes along the ramp, that is a tree buffer that DOT requires for adjacent properties along, um, the interstate, so this would not be visible, uh, along the interstate. With that in mind, uh, this information presented to you all, uh, we do thank you all for hearing us, this, this is going to be a private development, it's also going to be gated.
And your time is up.
Oh, my time is up?
You know the rules, we haven't been gone that long. You haven't been gone that long.
I got kind of carried away, but, uh, I, I'll say this to the end, we, we do thank you all, staff has recommended approval, and we have recommending, uh, two conditions with our request that we forward over to the Dr. Anderson as well.
Okay, so we've exhausted the time for anybody speaking in favor, anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Yes, sir? Sir, come to the podium.
Answering Lamar, uh, been in trucking, uh, for twenty-plus years, I want to know in that area, it's a high prostitution and robbery area, so what, what are you gonna do, um, to combat all the prostitution and all that, that high-traffic area, right there coming, coming that way? We're putting that truck lot there to a Quick Trip, it's, it's gonna bring a lot of more crime and robbery to that, uh, to that area right there.
But, don't answer that yet, hold that question. Are you, is that it for your question? Anybody else like to speak in opposition to? Anybody else opposed? Yes, sir, if you come back and use your five minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you for that, uh, question, so, um, we know that this is probably a question that was going to come up. Again, this will be a private-owned, uh, which will not be open for transient truckers to come in and out, these are going to be Fortune five hundred companies that are owning, uh, assorted lot of trucks and storing their particular goods at this location, this will also be, uh, installed with high-level security as well, so there's also that, that will hopefully combat anything going on. We can't control what's happening on other parcels, but for this particular one, you're gonna get a graded development.
All right, Dr. Anderson.
All right. Um, I also want to talk about the conditions, I know you all, um, did, um, provide two conditions, and one that says that it must have a fence surrounding the property with a maximum height of six feet, fence materials must be approved by the technical review committee or zoning administrator prior, and must provide one deciduous tree within each parking island, which you kind of talked about that in your presentation. So those are the two, um, proposed conditions, correct?
Yes, that's correct, we are, we are aware of that.
All right, so at this time, I would like to approve the, um, the zoning of the, um, GB to LI to construct a trailer parking lot with the two conditions.
I don't see the condit-, did you read the conditions?
She just, I just read them, but he can read them.
Okay, yeah, read it into the record, please.
It was actually the, the commissioner's conditions that were added.
And these are my conditions, uh, Mr. Chair.
I've spoken, I got you.
I'm adding these conditions as well, okay.
Yeah, read those.
Uh, the conditions were, uh.
Hold on a second, sir, hold on a second, and you're in agreeance with this?
We are in agreeance with those conditions.
Okay, go ahead, please.
The conditions are, one, um, must have a fence surrounding the property with a maximum height of six feet, fences, uh, material must be approved by the technical review committee or zoning, uh, zoning administrator prior to the issuance of land serving permit, and two, um, must provide a, a deciduous tree in each of the, uh, parking islands.
And the commissioner's made her motion with the conditions already included, so I will ask for a second at this time.
Second.
Second by, uh, Commissioner Franklin, are there any questions, comments?
Yes. The only thing I have to say is, your mother raised you well, but you came in here saying elementary, and you all. We're glad you moved on up, but.
Any other comments? Those in favor, I. Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you.
Proud of you, Tyler.
Resolution twenty-two twenty-two, one hundred and twenty-six is a resolution authorizing the initiation of an amendment to the twenty-thirty-four comprehensive plan to reflect the significant changes associated with Marty's Plan South Lake Bust Rapid Transit Line, to authorize the chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
As this text amendment, uh, being presented by the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Egeke.
Sir, Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners, good evening. When this, uh, proposal was i- initially sent to us, uh, came to us, rather, uh, it was spearheaded by Marty to do, um, a BRT that has to do with a, a transit development, type housing. Going through the study that they did, it also brought some other elements to it. One of the things it will bring into our comprehensive plan is to introduce the concept of density, much higher than what we currently have. It is one of the mission piece for true development that will generate the type of housing that we see in other counties, that we all like to see. Not only that, the, um, that concept also touches on other areas that we've been talking about in the county. There are other studies that Marty will co- conduct outside of this study that deals with the stormwater issues around the southern regional, around the, um, Upper Riverdale entire area that has been a problem for years now, so that study will deal with that. It also has an economic development market analysis aspect to it. One of the things with this study, it's not a magic plan, if approved, we change the area overnight, it's not. But what it would do is set the stage for what we want to do, what the board wants to do, what the board has been talking about, that will plan our way out of what we have, not just you rezoning, because by doing that, we are able to plan those notes, those BRT notes, yet it's obvious, Marty has its needs, which is the ridership, but the ordinance is designed and the studies to follow, to make sure that a county actually redeveloped those areas, consistent with what they want, but at the same time, benefit the county. It will take time to happen, but what it does is it gives us the blueprint to go vertical. It's gonna be quite an interesting concept in what we do. So, our complaint gets a subsection, a new section about tier, about transit-oriented development that talks about land use yet, but introduces density to what we do, which is, um, what we want to do, to be able to, um, redevelop the county. There is no question that we are becoming an urban county. Uh, I know that we're struggling with how rural the county has been over some time, but for us to achieve all we're doing, this is the way to go, but more importantly, as I finish, is that there are other But more importantly, as I finish, is that there are other studies, economic development and market analysis coming that will help us, that all that being done by Marta, not us. There is also a stormwater study that's going to hopefully alleviate the flooding issues we have in that area. All that will be part of what this proposal will bring to the county. So with that...
It's public hearing. Text amendment initiated by the Board of Commissioners. Does anybody here like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anybody opposed to? Anybody opposed? All right, hearing none? Go ahead.
Well, I'm not opposed, but Mr. Jiki, you touched on something about flood areas or whatever. You know, we are doing some things now. Will that affect it or will that be a combination of what we're doing already?
That will be a combination. As a matter of fact, they are working with the fire department.
Okay.
On that, yeah, they are working with fire department. So that will be a combination of it.
Okay.
And this study, if approved, actually gives us a better insight into the LCI. There are parts of the LCI that will coincide with this. So what we have, Marta studied to go with that study also. Yes, short answer is yes. That it complements what we are doing.
Okay.
That's in the fire department.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Any other questions?
No, just Madam Vice Chair, if I may add to it, though. I think that not only will it approve and prove it, but what will happen is it will be a condition that we will look at to receive not only federal funding that we're already working on, but state funding from the transportation side of the house. So, but does widening our ability to be able to get additional funding to resolve those issues? Are you familiar, Chief? With the...
Any other questions, comments? Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
Next is, while it reads resolution, it should be actually ordinance. Ordinance 2022-127, which should read an ordinance to amend the Clayton County zoning ordinance as amended specifically Appendix A zoning, Article IV special districts, to add a new section, Section 4.107 Transit Oriented Development, TOD overlay districts, and Section 4.108 TOD residential support, RT, including text and maps to establish a new TOD zoning overlay areas for the following five proposed station areas in unincorporated Clayton County on Marta's planned Southlake Bus Rapid Transit BRT line, Norman Drive, Lee's Mill, Southern Regional Medical Center, Mount Zion, and Southlake Mobility Center, to set forth the said development standards to provide an effective date of this ordinance to provide for appeal of conflicting ordinances, to provide for codification, to provide for severability, and for other purposes.
You have anything to add, Mr. Jiki?
Yes. This plan, in terms of the zoning aspect, the plan is to use overlay districts in those five stations. It will hopefully minimize issues of nonconformity to some extent, instead of creating a new zoning classification. We went with the development standard. So it's all set to go. And the only thing I'm asking, Commissioners and my staff, we're going to say a lot of no's to people, that they must conform with the plan for us to be able to build it.
All right. Anybody like to speak in favor of?
Good evening. I'm Allison Stewart Harris. I'm here on behalf of Marta. And all I want to do is say thank you all so much for your ongoing partnership and collaboration with us. I also want to thank Patrick and Erica and Patrick's staff as well. I'm here for any questions you all might have about the overlay. And again, just wanted to say thank you for your consideration tonight.
Well, thank you, and thank you for all you're doing.
And Commissioners, by the way, she's the consultant.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anyone in opposition? All right, is there a motion?
Well, question before the motion, please.
Question for the motion, go ahead.
Does this take away the other overlay part? Is this a part of or separate?
Are they separate?
They are separate?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. This is overlay to do with the clusters, those stations that are already defined, where the station's going to go. This overlay will apply in those clusters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
Yes, so we need a litigation, personnel, and real estate.
All right, I'll make a motion, go into executive session for personnel, real estate, and litigation. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye. Opposed, it's unanimous.
I'm ready.
All right, motion to reconvene.
Some move.
Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor? Those opposed, it's unanimous. Everybody have a good night.